Welcome to East Martin Township for the Supervisory Meeting. Our lights have fallen into order and I'll start the live meeting today.
In the regard of the United States of America and to deliver our mother on what she stands, while our nation under God in this world will be made of just one small screw.
All right, next we'll call.
County Chief Phil Velasquez.
County Police Department Vasquela.
Kelly Goff, Township Engineer.
David Chris, Township Finance.
Bob Hart, Township Manager.
Sean Kelly, Township Solicitor.
Your good master, Vice Chairman.
That's Jamila Winder, Supervisor.
Kevin McDevitt, Supervisor.
Ashley DiPiero, Chairwoman. First, I'd like to say a few words about East Martin Pharmacy. As Chairwoman, I just want to thank you so much from the bottom of my heart as not only as a Chairwoman, but also as a resident, a mom, and just my love for East Martin. You guys have been so generous and so involved and net on above and beyond for our community. And I could be more grateful and privileged to be a part of your pharmacy. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart and everybody on this board, nobody speaks for everybody, for all you've done for East Martin. Anybody else like to say a few words before we present to you an award?
Just a, uh, den of gratitude. Thank you for your service, especially during these challenging times you've shown up for our community. So, thank you. Thank you.
I would like to call you up and let you take a couple of pictures. This is for our greatest appreciation, the East Martin Township hereby presents East Martin Pharmacy with this award in recognition for your ongoing commitment and dedicated service to the health, safety, and welfare of the East Martin community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if we can get a couple of pictures?
Yes. Thank you so much.
And Manager, if I can give us a couple of comments. You're very, you're very kind words to our guests of honor. On behalf of the staff here, myself and the staff, we are so thankful as well. There's never a moment that Manziel and his entire, entire team hasn't offered and stepped up immediately when anything was needed for the residents of this township and quite frankly, outside of this township, they're a true community partner with us and we hope and wish them much success for many, many years to come. I know this, if anybody sees on Facebook, you'll know where, you'll know where I'm going with this, but not all heroes wear capes. So, thank you, Sarah. Thank you. On behalf of everyone, thank you.
Well, once upon a time, you too. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'd like to announce that for that executive session discussed not personal allegations, I'd like to make a motion to approve the last meeting minutes on August 24th, 2021. I have seconded your motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, second by Supervisory Leader, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Citizens favor. Any comments by the Board of Supervisors?
I just want to thank the staff of East Martin Township for an amazing community day to come out of, we're not out of COVID yet, but to come out of the year that we've had. I think the last time I was at our community was in 2019. I didn't even have my son and to be able to be there with Ken and my, my husband was just simply amazing. You guys really did an awesome, awesome job. So, and to see the comments on social media, hear from our neighbors, you oftentimes were peer negative, but to see so much positive about what our township did for community was really making me proud to be a part of this team. So, just wanted to thank you for a great, great day.
And I'd like to echo that too. It was a fantastic day. I mean, you got, and it was all orchestrated so well. I mean, right from the 9/11 memorial to then afterwards, everything just went down, right down the line to the fireworks and we finally, what is it, three years? Then we finally got it all. No, everything was perfect. I mean, the, the weather, you couldn't have asked for a better day and the staff was just, it was flawless. Thank you very much for all the hard work.
I think that goes for everybody here on the board. Thank you to the staff, thank you to the police department, thank you to the fire company, everybody that was involved in any day making that go so seamlessly. It was such a fun day.
And I'll just add one more thing and then enough to repeat, although I'd like to thank everybody for a great day and it, it takes people to do this and the people who are involved in this. I've been to many community days over the years here and this was by far the best one I've ever attended. Hopefully, we're gonna have to go some the top for next year, but we're gonna work on that. So, thank you.
Any other comments on the board? Okay, we want to hold business. I'd like to reaffirm the declaration of disaster emergency. I'd like to call on Township Manager, Mr. Robert Hart, to review this item, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you today is the, as you mentioned, the declaration of disaster emergency that occurred on September 1st, 2020. As you know, Hurricane Ada came through this town and others and did a lot of devastation and with no rhyme or reason, some neighborhoods were destroyed and others were left relatively harmless. So, this in particular, we declared the emergency and this, by declaring the emergency, it, it opens up potential funds from the state and from the federal government. So, today before you discuss the affirmation of that initial declaration.
Any questions from the board? I'd like to make a motion to reaffirm the declaration of disaster emergency. Do I have a second? I'll second that. Okay, so anybody Supervisory Leader, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Vice Supervisors?
Okay, if I can be here, reaffirm the trash truck purchase, like Nicole had on our Township Manager, Mr. Hart, to do that.
Thank you, Supervising Assistant. This is an interesting, a lot of people would see this and say, why are we not in the trash haul day business? But it's a little different here. So, we, for many years, since I've got here and as you've been before, when there are storms and different, different weather events and the township has to pick up limbs and debris, it has always been done, or at least been done for quite a while, we would send a truck out with a chipper and several Public Works workers and shred everything and then have to sweep up and it, it, it's a very long process. We thought it would prove it more efficient, quicker in every way for especially, especially some types of events, to have a trash truck where we can get in, get the stuff, get it in and move down the street in a much quicker timeframe than you would having to shred everything and clean it and back and forth. So, with the weather events, we seem to be getting on a more regular basis. They don't seem to be getting lighter and the quantity just seems to increase each year. We thought this made a lot more sense. It's a one-time investment of, it's a used truck of 2002 of $29,875 that would make our cleanup efforts just that much more efficient, that much more taxing on our staff and our equipment and really put us in a better position to deal with these types of events. So, tonight before you is to affirm the purchase of that trash truck. We have it here. It's in great condition and it's already at work.
Is there any questions from the board?
I'd just like to make a comment and that is genius. This was a great idea. I mean, I've seen the guys out there and they're, they, they do a few houses, then the truck's full with the chips and they have to go back and empty it and then come back again. A lot of times it's a wrap at one end of the township or the other. I mean, it takes half hour, 35 minutes to do it. Now for you guys, they just throw the stuff in, take it back, you can dump it at their leisure and then chip it up like, you know, it's genius.
Well, and, and from what I hear from our Public Works, it's really cool to drive to.
Can I drive?
I'll make one work one time, Matt. I saw it drive past my house last week. It's not the prettiest looking thing, it's a trash truck, but it's on old garbage and they were doing a job. It was, it was well worth it, I think, to purchase that. Everybody, now they put wood in there, so it's not gonna stick. And then it looked like they were having a funk around. Yeah.
Okay, you have a question from the board? I'd like to make a motion to reaffirm the trash truck purchase. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Vice Chair, Supervisors. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Ms. McDevitt?
Okay, finalization award for the 2021 Liquid Funds Road Program. I'd like to call on our Township Engineer, Kelly Goff.
Thank you, Supervisor McDevitt. Under this motion, I'm recommending the award of this contract to the Pico Constructors in the amount of $709,284.10. This project is being funded through Liquid Fuels Road Program. We completed the required 30-day review period, which is according to your responsible contractor ordinance and we found that they were compliant with your responsible contractor ordinance. Improvements include road rehabilitation, empty ramp installation, entry improvement for long green road drive and supplemental quarter. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to finalize the award for the Liquid Fuels Road Program. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Anybody like Supervisor McDevitt? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right, some of the government's business. Item A, the 2022 Minimum Municipal Obligations, I would like to call on our Finance Director, David Chris, to review this item.
Thank you, Supervisor Winder. I have the privilege tonight of discussing a few of the more exciting things on tonight's agenda. And we'll start with the most exciting one, the Minimum Municipal Obligations. So, under state law, every municipality is required to calculate and pay what's known as a Minimum Municipal Obligation, or MMO. And this is per a law that was put in place some time ago by the state in order to make sure that municipal pension plans remain improperly funded and that each municipality meet its obligation to the plans and then, of course, to their employees. And if you don't mind, I've got a presentation just to show you. As I mentioned, the MMO is required by state law. We have three different plans that we're calculating MMOs for. Of course, we have our Police Pension Defined Benefit Plan, we have our Non-Uniform Defined Benefit Plan, and then new, if you recall, we froze that plan and started a new Non-Uniform Defined Contribution Plan. So, we don't have any interest to have to define the MMO, but we will in future years. So, just a little brief history of, of the investment yield for our plan. So, going back over the last six years, five years, what you see on screen is the investment yield history for our Non-Uniform Pension Plan. And you can see trends are pretty much what you've probably experienced in your own investments or just that you've kept track of over the years. We've had some decent years and we've had some bad years. The bad years match up with when the market's been a bad year. But you can see overall, we've done fairly well. The most recent year in 2020, we had 11% return on our monies. Now, the difference between the 11% and below where you read 8.2%, one is the market value, one's the actual value. Now, all that means is that our actual return was 11%, but for calculation purposes, our investment rates are smoothed out over a period of time. So, instead of having peaks and valleys that we would have to react to, for calculation purposes, they take those, average them out and then smooth them out. Last year, although we had a actual return of 11%, for calculation purposes, it was 8.2%. And if we take a quick look at the Police Pension Plan, you'll notice the trends and the numbers are virtually identical. That's because both plans follow the same investment portfolio, investment criteria. So, the other important aspect when we talk about pension plans is the funding percentage, which basically is how do our plans stack up? And our Non-Uniform Pension Plan currently, as of the 2021 analysis that was done, is 94% funded. That puts us in the top tier of the municipalities around the state for funding percentages for pensions. Our Police Pension Plan is a little lower than that. It's at an 81.8%, still above the, well above the average in most municipalities in the, in the state. A little bit lower, the, the Non-Uniform Plan was positively impacted by freezing it and creating the new Defined Contribution Plan. So, we're actually seeing some benefits for that action that you took late last year. In any event, both of our plans are very highly funded and are in a very good position financially. So, now as far as our MMO is concerned, again, this is how much we need to contribute into each of the plans to keep them solid and to keep them moving on the right path. The first screen you'll see is the Non-Uniform Plan. So, even though we froze that plan, all current employees are part of it and, of course, we have obligations down the road when they eventually retire that we have to meet. So, you can see our, our MMO has steadily increased over the years. We started off back in 2016 at 311,000, then 317, 388, 397. Last year it was 416. This year is starting to creep back down. It's at 406. So, again, part of that work that you did last year, we're actually achieving some immediate benefits, even though the real true benefits are going to be long-term, 15, 20 years from now. And just very briefly, you see the different colors on the screen. When we talk about funding the pension plan, there's actually several different components that make up that funding. The yellow portion are the employee contributions. All the employees are required to contribute 5% of the pension plan. So, that's the yellow portion. The blue portion is the amount that goes to the recurring benefits, all the current retirees that are, are being paid through the plans. That tiny little orange part that you see, that really thin line, those are our administrative costs. We have very low administrative costs. We repay our actuaries, we repay our financial advisors, and we pay the firm that does all of our retiree checks. So, our administrative fees are very low. The top fee, that gray portion, is actually an important one. That's the amount that we're paying to make up for previous years downturns, years where we've had bad investment returns. And this has gone back 15, 20 years. So, part of our recovery plan is that we're required to make up those differences over the years and we've been steadily doing that over the last several years. And we're on track so that come 2026, we'll have paid off all those prior losses and so that that number will actually shrink and eventually go away. And right now it's targeted for 2026. So, as long as we continue what we're doing and keep doing the right things, that will shrink and then our MMO obligations will shrink as well. So, the good news is the changes that you made last year, we're scraping benefits already and we're on track to, to having, while, while the plans are successfully funded right now, we're on track to having them even, funded even better. And our Police Pension Plan is the same. The only difference here is the amount that we pay into the plan. There are more people in, in, more officers in the Police Pension Plan. So, you can see that over the years, we've paid 700,000, 800,000. The last couple of years, we've, it's been bumped up to a million dollars that we end up paying as MMOs into that plan. A couple of different reasons why. We have, recently, we've had a number of officers who have retired that are affecting the current annual amount that we have to pay. We had a disability a couple of years ago, that adversely affects it as well. But two things to remember. One is we do get state grants that help offset this. So, we'll get $300,000 this year that will offset this amount and reduce it accordingly. The other thing is that gray amount, as long as we keep paying our MMOs, we're on track for the year 2026 to get that paid down and be 100% funded at that point. So, again, we'll see those benefits down the road, which as it turns out is right around the corner. So, our MMOs for next year are what you had in front of you. The Non-Uniform Plan is $406,260. The Police Pension Plan is 1,089,695 and that'll be offset by approximately $375,000 that we receive from the state. So, hopefully I didn't make that any more complicated than you need it to be, but maybe a little firmer grasp on the numbers that we're talking about and also that there is actually, although we're doing very well, there's an even brighter light at the end of the tunnel. So, be glad to answer any question you might have.
Any questions from the board?
I got one question. We're doing well, we have like 94% of the non-uniform resources, they're funded up to 94%. What are we invested in? Who makes those choices? The jury, you don't have to count.
I can't take credit for it. The township has a retirement benefits advisory board that consists of a member of the Board of Supervisors, the Township Manager, the Assistant Manager, a representative for non-uniform employees, which is me, and a representative of police employees, which is Sergeant Brandon. We advise our true investment advisors, which is Conrad Simple Financial Advisors, who actually do the actual investment assessment themselves. There is a, there's criteria set, how much we're allowed to be invested in equity versus how much we're allowed to be invested in income. There's criteria established that dictates what type of municipal, which types of funds we're allowed to invest in. They have to have a certain ranking, they have to have investment managers who have been there for a certain number of years. So, so the actual investment advisors through Conrad Simple Investment Services.
Thank you. And if I can add, it's really, and then to, to be honest, the Pension Advisory Board, it really, it's the policy that the advisory board adopts and because we don't want to be too risk, you know, or, or risk averse, it's gotta be careful. We really take the advice of our professionals and really experts in the field and, you know, these are public funds, we know. So, we're very cautious and we're very conservative and through that, we've done very well. As you see, we, the average, the average, if you go across municipalities, if you take out Philadelphia, which is like 40% funded and, and Alagene County, it's usually around 73, 76% is the average. Our police is at 82 and the, and the non-uniform is at 90, over 90. So, we're in a very good situation as far as funding, but even more importantly, the pension reform changes that you made with this and all the other pension reform changes you made late last year are, are already affecting us in a positive way and are gonna have tremendous effects for the residents of this township in the years to come.
Thank you, and thank you for that thorough explanation. And, and seriously.
I warned you.
No, it was, it was well articulated and understood and I appreciate you and Mr. Hart at really chipping away and making East Martin financially responsible and the forecast for 2026 looks positive. So, thank you. So, I'd like to call a motion to approve the Minimum Municipal Obligations. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Supervisor Winder. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Chairman?
Resolution number 2842, Authorization of the Destruction of Certain Public Records. Again, we'll call on our Finance Director, Mr. Chris. If you weren't excited about the MMO. Hold on there.
Get ready. So, as a standard practice, the township staff regularly identifies catalogs and boxes for storage, certain records that no longer need to be accessed routinely. These are things like financial reports, old permits, correspondences, all types of different paper records. These boxes are then loaded downstairs and they go in the file room where we try to forget about them. Well, what happens is the file room gets filled up, we have to replace it with more boxes and so then annually, township staff goes through and reviews those boxes, reviews the list of the stored records and determines which ones can be disposed of in accordance with the state's retention and disposition schedule for public records of financial management of municipalities' handbook. I'll later give you the weather address for it. So, we refer to this as getting rid of all the old stuff and making room for the new stuff and that's all it is. So, the list that you have in front of you is the, the list of the boxes of records that we'd like to dispose of and the resolution in front of you, number 2842, authorizes us to dispose of those records.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Ms. Chris. Can I call for a motion to approve Resolution number 2842, Authorization of the Destruction of Certain Public Records?
I'll make that a motion.
Motion made by Supervisor McDevitt. Do I have a second? Okay, second by Vice Chair, Supervisors. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Resolution number 2843, which is Authorizing Application to the Pico Green Region Open Space Program from the Sandberg Street Park District. I'd like to call on Township Engineer, Ms. Kelly Goff, to review this resolution, please.
Thank you, Chairwoman DiPiero. Under this resolution, I'm recommending that Pico Board authorize the application of Pico Region Green, Pico Green Region Open Space Program. Funds will be used to, for various landscaping improvements within Sandberg Street Park. Under this grant application, we will be requesting the award of $10,000 and it's a 50% match requirement. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call, I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution number 2843. Do I have a second? Second by Supervisor Winder. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Yes, item D, Authorization to Advertise Rubbons for the Increasing the Number of Members of the Human Relations Commission from 4 to 7. I'd like to call on our Manager, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Supervisor McDevitt. The 40 tonight is, as you said, is a Authorization to Expand the Human Relations Commission. The Human Relations Commission was formed several The Human Relations Commission was formed several years ago in East Norton Township, and the founding chairman is here tonight, Mr. Don Ben, who is on the commission again and really revitalizing it as we sit here. The typical HRC is, deals with a lot of employment issues or housing and discrimination, he quoted that, where if someone feels they were discriminated, some at a business or lodging in the township, they would come here, go in front of the HRC, and the HRC would try to mediate it and work something out before it goes any further. That is what the typical HRC is for. To East Norton's credit and Mr. Ben's credit, when it was formed here, Mr. Ben took it to levels that really haven't been seen in the Commonwealth. He can speak more to it if need be, but he really took an educational, put an educational aspect to this. He got Montgomery County courts involved and brought kids over there and really taught, you know, what we do as adults and what happens in the adult world is really affected in the future by how our children learn and understand and grow and evolve and in all these things that are exposed to so much. Mr. Ben took that to heart and really made the most of it with, it's just a significant educational piece and outreach piece of this. We've been stagnant for the last couple of years, a few years, and with our HRC, we had people leave, and then with the pandemic, there was a stagnation to it. Mr. Ben was, I had myself and the board had the conversation with Mr. Ben and see if we could cajole him into returning and putting some of that vigor and hustle behind that muscle to get our HRC up and rolling again and doing some good things. After a couple wrestling matches, I took two out of three falls, and he is back on the commission and looking to grow the commission. So we had four members looking to grow to seven. A lot of that is, people have busy lodges where you only have four, it's tough to do these kinds of things, 21 or 2, have things go monthly if you can't do it. So to have seven and have seven people who are interested and really being subjected to Mr. Ben's enthusiasm and vision, I think will really put our HRC back into a position where when Mr. Ben leaves the commission, it leaves it thriving and moving forward and really a vibrant committee. So that's what's for you tonight, to expand that and to really give Mr. Ben some added ammunition.
Into hustle. All right. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to authorize to act raise the ordinance for increasing the number of human relations commission from four to seven. Do I have a second on that version? I'll second that. Okay, so any of Vice Supervisor Winder, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So you see the new drill. Thank you. Supervisor Winder.
Of the fun stuff, so authorize the purchase of playground equipment for the Old Arch Road Park. I'd like to call on county manager, Paul Hart.
Thank you, Supervisor Winder. When I came here five and a half years ago, we had seven parks, but five, uh, four parks that are parks as far as playground parks and that kind of, is sort of a non-passive and active park. When I got here, the Old Arch Road Park as a playground was probably in the best condition and the one that we looked at as a model of trying to upgrade our other parks. Well, the board over the last couple of years has really invested in our other parks, Sandberg Street Park here with this ADA and then really just tremendous addition to our park. Matt Watson, we did the basketball courts, we put grills, we did a lot of things, and there's still some additions coming in the spring for Matt Watson. And Heroes Park, as you know, you adopted that into a really a new park with some really innovative and interesting and fun amenities there. Now, if you look at Old Arch Road Park, it was in rough shape. It's a beautiful piece of property over there on Arch Road, Old Arch Road, but it was taking it easy. Add to that the weather we've been getting. It has really, there's storm or runoff issues besides the deterioration of a lot of the We just, as you know, we just did, the Sandberg Street Park this year, the co-starners company that did that happened to send us an email saying they're having an end of season, 30% off sale. Normally, I obviously would have just passed that by, but because of the shape we're in, I thought we could wait till spring, but 30% is 30%, we can do a lot here. So in front of you tonight is a new system going on, but it's also for safety, runoff, and everything that that deals with. The rubber base that is protective and meets all of those standards about falls are just going to be all a part of this project, and it will really, our public works staff with Public Works Extraordinaire and cameraman, Tim Bradbury, who was once the owner of Brad Stevens, to really do some swell improvements over there and grading with this new base and this new playground equipment will really change the face of the park and the ability to enjoy it. We've already been over there, we've had staff over there lifting trees and doing some quick changes, but it's really going to be change and for $90,000, which is a lot of money, but it's a lot less than we would have paid if we waited till the spring. So we thought it prudent to jump on it now, get it rolling, and really put the finishing touches on our playground parks throughout the township.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any questions from the board? I'd like to make a motion to approve and authorize the purchase of playground equipment for the Old Arch Road Park. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Yes, and by Supervisor Depp, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Monthly expenditures from August 24th through September 27th, 21, we have a big number there, I'm just going to let Mr. Chris take over from here.
Presented to you tonight are the township expenditures for the month, more specifically the expenditures from the date of the last board meeting to the date of this board meeting. And as you recall, we started doing this last year, and we will continue doing this. The expenditures for that time period totaled $876,969.19. Our council pound portion totaled $344,802.46. As I've said before, those are the payments for our utilities, the supplies, services, professional services, all of the things that keep the building moving each day. And then our payroll expenditures were $532,166.73, and of course, that goes for all of our salaries, wages, tax payments, et cetera. The township staff were asking for the board's approval of these expenditures. I mean, for landing, is there any question you might have?
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Any questions from the board? I'd like to make a motion to approve the monthly expenditures. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Vice Chair Givanas, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Any other business? Manager's update?
Thank you, Manager. I'll try not to make this too long, just talking about the item cleanup. We continue to, our township staff continue to go out there and do cleanup of the streams and so much, it was in the streams from block away, sheds, all kinds of equipment ended up a block or two down in some neighborhoods. Removing a lot of that has been, you know, it's a challenge, but our crews are out there enjoying, making it happen, doing a lot of work on the basins out there. We've had, in East Norton, several of our basins are owned actually by either the homeowners' association or a particular homeowner owns the basin. Many people think it's the township. However, rather than have them fail, we have jumped in and tried to remediate some of the issues and work with the actual owners of those basins because we don't want any failures that could happen if there were damage to our, significant damage to our basins. We continue to do as much cleanup, as much work to make sure all of those systems work as well as possible. The reality is, when you get that much rainfall, that's probably two, three times as much rainfall as any of those things are designed to handle. So that's always a challenge. The average basin is designed for a 25-year storm. The average PND basin is designed for a 10-year storm. What we had there was probably a 200-year storm. So you can see, there's a lot of issues and a lot of other things that come into play on these issues. So we're working hard, we're going to have an educational piece as well in the future because there's certain things that homeowners can do to help alleviate that. Again, the community, as mentioned, we thank you all for the kind words. It was great having everyone there, it was really a fantastic day. The best staff in the world. Everybody's out there, our parks are in creation, from everyone, from our finances, our police, everybody's out there working in, as you well know. The ones that I know you appreciate, but I know always seem to get, you don't see them on the front lines is, when we all go home after it's over, and I'm in my car and driving home, our public works group are out there clean enough. So they're there before we start and they're there at the end, and I'm going to thank them and let them know how well they are appreciated, how much they are appreciated. And what they do every day is, we are the luckiest township out there. Our crew does work, and other townships have to pay contractors to come in and pay top dollar, but our people are talented, they're hard workers, and they really make us proud every day and save our residents' money. And lastly, we have a trunk and tree coming up, you'll hear information about that soon. Give me a nice event, typical of what we do. And follow that up with the tree lighting, which you'll see coming soon, the week, I think it's the week after Thanksgiving. Stay tuned for more information on Facebook, and we'll send it around. We have some surprises that we're working on that I haven't been told the board yet because I want, I want them to come through, but I think that's going to be better than ever and a real way to finish off a great year and celebrate the holiday season in a spectacular way. So thank you for allowing us to do what we do.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Anything else to be heard?
Madam Chairwoman, or Supervisors, Manager Hart, everybody else. Thank you, thank you for the kind words I heard tonight. It's so much better now I hear at home. Thank you for approving the bump up to seven people. With seven new commissioners, we'll be able to do great things. Already, I have additional training for the three existing commissioners scheduled for next week. Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission will be here in November to train all seven new people. U.S. Department of Justice Community Relations Division will be with us in December, and in February, the Anti-Defamation League will be here to run for us in biased and hate crimes. Additionally, I am in contact with Paul Frye School, will once again be running some version of our annual human relations contest. It's going to depend on what the court system looks like, if we're able to visit there or we can find a similar alternative venue. I live across the street from the Old Arch Playground. I am tremendously grateful for the improvements that are being made. I'm in that playground every day. I saw how many kids and young parents were using it when it was, and now I'm sure the numbers will go up greatly. I thank you for today. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? For the new, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn on meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
And by Supervisor Depp, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I'm adjourned.